We have musical accompaniment.
Oh, there he is.
Does he know he's on?
Yeah, he knows.
Okay.
Okay. Should I go?
No, what's his bowtie?
This is an outrage, no bowtie.
Okay.
Don't put a bowtie on.
So, um...
Oh, wait.
Okay.
He can't hear us.
Is everyone ready?
Yeah, so I'm reporting out of closed session. So the Emeryville City Council and the Mesa Board met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda. Regarding item 5.1.1, an update was provided and direction was given. Regarding item 6.1.1, on a motion by Councilmember Martinez, seconded by Councilmember Donahue on a 5-0 vote, the City Council authorized that the city attorney initiate litigation. Regarding item 7.1.1, an update was provided and direction given. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The time is 7:14. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:14. I'd like to call to order the management of Emeryville Services Authority. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Potts?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders.
Here. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Martinez, second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, pardon me. I'm supposed to read a little announcement before we go much further, if I may?
Okay, you may.
All right, as everyone watching and in the room can see, the mayor is participating in the teleconference, and let it be known that it'll be reflected in the minutes that that is what occurred, per the government code. The teleconference location was identified in all the noticing for the meeting, and the...I will confirm that you, Mr. Mayor, may hear the proceedings. Is that true? You can hear us all well?
Yes.
And for everyone in this room, can you hear the mayor well?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and he will make available to anyone wishing to participate on his end, he will make that available to them. Thank you.
Yes, and a notice of the agenda was posted in the lobby of the hotel, and people are welcome to attend in my room. Which is a scary thought, but it's true. Okay, so there is a motion by Member Martinez and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Members of the Ex parte communications?
No, sir.
No.
Seeing none, public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda? Any member of the public who wishes to speak has three minutes to do so.
Oh. Is your item, ma'am, on the Mesa agenda or on the City Council agenda?
Just a private comment.
Okay.
Can someone turn the camera to the mayor?
I like to get in early because you guys stay up past my bedtime. I'm Marilyn Fullrath. I live at Watergate, and I'm active in the Emeryville Senior Center. In fact, I am treasurer of a nonprofit organization that raises funds to augment the money that you contribute to the center's activities. Between us, we've created the best senior center in the Bay Area, and I hope you all know that. We have a variety of programs and activities for everyone. And I know that you, like many others, are sitting there thinking, wow, pretty soon I'll be able to retire, and then I'm going to be able to do all the things I want to do. That is based on the fact that you will be mobile, and a lot of it depends on the fact that you'll have friends and relatives in the area. Many people can't enjoy those privileges. And I feel that the senior center offers them an opportunity to go on trips, to take activities. We have physical activities for every ability, from chair yoga to wild dance programs. It gives people a reason to get up in the morning, and I truly believe that's one of the advantages of the senior center. You can stay all day and sleep in, but it makes life pretty dull. And so I thank you for your contributions, and that was my good thought for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any other member of the public? Seeing none, the consent calendar, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Member Potts and a second by Member Donahue to approve the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved. Item 7.1 is an action item, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority approving an agreement of employment between Mesa and Christine Daniel as city manager and authorizing the Chair of the Board of Directors to execute the First Amendment on behalf of Mesa, Lisa Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am before you with a resolution and staff report regarding the hiring of Christine Daniel as our new city manager. I'd like to go over just a few of the finer points of her contract. They include her starting salary at $18,454 a month, with the usual expenses of $500 a month for the city manager. Also, we are going to be offering deferred compensation at $14,000 annually, so that means it will be divvied up between her paychecks. And all the standard sick leave, holiday, and vacation provisions will be awarded to her, including a prorated amount of administrative leave upon her hire, which is standard among city employees. And in addition, because she is considered a classic employee, she will enter the Calper system as a classic. All this is a result of a four-month search that we undertook back in...yes, back in May, to find a new city manager when former city manager Carolyn Lair announced her retirement. We actually had 30 candidates from across the nation apply. We were very fortunate to get very high-level candidates to choose from, and extremely fortunate that we were able to select a candidate with Christine Daniel's experience...Christine Daniel experience, her experience. So I'm coming to you today to ask you to approve the resolution with actually an amendment. We would like to propose that Christine begin September 24th instead of the original October 1st date that is actually noted in the resolution and the staff report. If that is acceptable to Council, then she would begin September 24th, and you would be approving the resolution as amended with the September 24th date. Although we will be formally introducing Christine at her first meeting in October, in case Council had or the mayor had any questions of her, she actually is available tonight to answer any questions or if you had any concerns or comments about her contract. However, again, the formal introduction, with all the pomp and circumstance, will happen at the first meeting in October.
Thank you. Are there questions for Lisa?
No.
No?
No? Thank you, Lisa. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Nope.
Seeing none. Is there any discussion, Member Potts?
Nope.
Member Medina?
No.
Member Martinez?
No, I'll move the resolution as amended with an earlier start date.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion by Member Martinez and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution amending the date of hire to September 24th, 2018. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. The resolution is approved. This adjourns this meeting. The time is 7:22 PM. At 7:22 PM, I call to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion from Member Martinez and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Ex parte communications, are there any?
No.
Hearing none, public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda?
Nobody.
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Martinez to approve consent. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. There are no action items. The time is 7:23. This meeting is adjourned. 7:23, Madam Clerk. We call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville's regular meeting. Please note that all members are still present. I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion from Member Martinez and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. There are no special orders of the day. Announcement of commissioning committee vacancies, Madam Clerk.
Just to say that we've had an ongoing recruitment, as you know, to fill our unexpected vacant seats. That recruitment will end this coming September 9th, and the appointments you will make at your October 2nd meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmembers, special announcements or reports on meetings? Member Potts?
Nothing at this time.
And Member Medina?
I attended the Small Business Bash hosted by the Economic Development Committee, and it was a well-attended and very fun event, and we saw a lot of members of our community out there from local businesses.
Thank you, Member Martinez.
Nothing to report at this time.
Member Donahue?
Nothing to report.
Okay, the city managers' report?
City managers' report. Oh, I'm sorry, there is none. None.
There's no city managers' report tonight?
No, there is none.
Okay, thank you. Ex parte communications, any members wishing to report something?
No, sir.
No.
No? At this time, we'll have public comment for the consent agenda or items that are not on this agenda. So items that are on the agenda, we'll have comment for later. Any member of the public wishing to speak on items not on this agenda has three minutes to do so. Is there any member?
I have a public comment speaking card.
Okay.
For Mary Eileen Farrell.
That's...
Oh, that's for on the later on. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, so we have no public comment at this time, closing public comment. There's a consent calendar, members, do anyone wish to pull anything?
No.
No.
No, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Donahue to approve consent. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. There are no public hearings tonight. Item 12.1 is an action item, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving an agreement of employment. This is the Christine Daniel contract in the City Council agenda. Do we need to have the same presentation for this meeting, Lisa, or no?
She's coming. Actually, it's the same presentation, but I'm still available in case there's any other questions that people may have thought of.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, we'll entertain public comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move resolution with the amendment of changing the start date to September 24th?
I'll second.
There's a motion by Member Martinez and a second by Member Donahue to approve this resolution amending the start date to September 24th, 2018. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Item 12 point...that's approved. Item 12.2 is the Smoking Pollution Control Ordinance, second reading. Mr. City Attorney?
So Assistant City Attorney Andrea Vizcua will make the presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have a presentation tonight. I'm here for questions. The ordinance in front of you was pursuant to the direction given at the August 3rd meeting, which was to make smoking prohibited at smoking lounges again, and so that is what is presented in your packet tonight. If I have any...if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Also note that Tamiko Johnson from Alameda County Public Health is here in the audience. Any questions?
Are there questions for Andrea?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none. Ally, do we have public comment cards for this item?
I have one from Mary Eileen Farrell.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open it for public comment, and Mary Farrell will have three minutes to start.
Hello, my name's Mary Eileen Farrell. I live at Watergate on 5 Admiral, and about three years ago, several concerned residents at Watergate started a group called the Residents Oversight Group to address issues. And smoking was about number one or number two with noise and other things that we could not address with our homeowners association or with our community. These are things that we had to bring to you. And it's still a major problem. I still get phone calls, even though I'm not on the leadership anymore, I've gone on to some other things, about people who are moving because the smoke is so bad, their walls have turned yellow, people with asthma who are very adversely affected. I know that you are...there has been discussion, because I was at your last smoking ordinance meeting, about the marijuana rooms and whether that's going to affect the employees there. I'm concerned that this discussion, which needs to be dealt with and the time given to it, needs to be addressed, will delay your decision-making. It seems that that got added on to the ordinance change that will stop smoking in condominiums. And I'm hoping that perhaps you can arrange it somehow, that you can decide on...vote on stopping smoking in the condos. We're all affected, and some are really in serious health conditions with neighbors who smoke outrageously. And they are allowed to smoke with our rules, but your rules will supersede our rules. They can smoke inside, and the smoke still gets into us, or they can smoke on their patio, and it comes in our windows. It's...it just won't be fixed unless it's a law. And we entreat you sincerely, and hopefully, and I'm speaking for several members who could not attend tonight, that we really need this done soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for discussion. Member Potts?
So the last meeting, we were tasked, Member Donahue and I were tasked to have a subcommittee to deal with some concerns about changing the smoking lounge portion. And I will say to address the public comment, when I started this, the first question I asked the city attorney is, would this delay the ordinance? And it would not, so its impact would happen at the same time as it would if we'd passed it at the previous meeting. So with that said, I was able to work with Andrea on some language for section 529.09, the smoking lounge, and by simply putting in the phrase, "Unless such smoking lounges constitutes a private smokers lounge and an owner-operated retail or wholesale tobacco shop under the labor code, doesn't share a wall or ceiling or floor with multi-use residential public place or other areas identified in this section." And do you have that full language for us? Thank you. It solves the two major concerns, and so I will make a motion to approve this ordinance with that one change after we've had our discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Member Medina, any comment?
I'd like a second to read the suggested language. It just went up on the screen. Unless such smoking lounge constitutes...
Does John have this language?
I don't have any language. I was about to text the clerk and ask what language this is.
Mayor, I'll send that to you right now.
Okay.
You're emailing it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'd love to personally get the opinion of Tamiko, who's been helping guide us through this process, if they have any objections to this language.
You can approach the podium.
So this is Tamiko Johnson with the Public Health Department. So I'm just trying to, in lay language, understand what this change actually means. So Councilmember Potts, if you could kind of break it down in layman's terms, or Andrea, if you'd be willing to do that, that would be really helpful.
As I understand it, and you can tell me if I have this wrong, the purpose of this was, again, to permit smoking lounges if and only if they were an independent building and had no employees. So...
That is correct. So to address, note, the employee issue, the smoking can only occur at an owner-operated retail tobacco shop. And to address the, basically, the standalone building, what we've said is that the smoking lounge cannot share a wall, ceiling, or floor with a multi-unit residence, public place, or any of the areas identified in the ordinance.
Member Medina?
What about...is it able to share a wall with other businesses?
No.
It has to be standalone?
Another business would be incorporated in the public place definition.
Okay, so literally only a standalone building, owner-operated?
We went for the unicorn.
You really went for it. You know, my main objection last time was labor rights, and I'm not seeing a big problem with this as it is. I'm curious to hear from my fellow council members, but yeah, just...
I think it addresses all the problems we talked about last time, so I'm fine with it.
Andrea, would you be able to answer for me what the definition of public place is?
I can. Public place means any place, public or private, open to the general public regardless of any fee or age requirement, including, for example, businesses, bars, restaurants, clubs, dining areas, outdoor recreational facilities, sports arenas, stores, stadium parks, greenways, playgrounds, including tot lots, retail stores, theaters, and waiting rooms. Excludes a place that has a cannabis sales conditional use permit pursuant to Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code and dispensary retailer operator's permit pursuant to Chapter 28 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code.
I just don't understand why we're doing this. I don't understand why we're bending over backwards to find this for this place that doesn't exist.
You know, I think, again, it's...we're not going to be looking at this ordinance again, and I don't...I didn't perceive the purpose of this ordinance as a blanket smoking ban, and so this was the one chance we had to carve out a place for smoking lounges. And so that was my intent a month ago, it remains my intent. You know, they have been...they are still legal in the state of California, and it's a, you know, it's a viable business if you can find a spot.
I respect your intent, but I won't be supporting this.
Okay, we have a motion from Member Potts?
I'm looking for a second.
I second.
Is there a second to my motion?
So to clarify, this will approve the whole ordinance, and it will still roll out at the same time, just with a slight change in it?
No, I'm approving what's in the actual packet, the original ordinance that prohibits smoking in any building that would be a business or a home.
We did not hear your motion. It didn't come through on the thing, so can I make it again?
Sorry, I'm making a substitute motion to approve what was presented in the staff packet that was given direction on August 3rd, which is to approve the original ordinance that staff drafted with the county.
I'll second that.
There's a substitute motion.
John, you cut out again.
Being of the ordinance before the council today. Please call the roll.
Mayor Bowders, you cut out again.
Yep.
You cut out again.
There's a motion by the mayor and a second by Member Martinez to approve at second reading the full ordinance as written by staff.
That's fine.
With no amendments. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
No.
Councilmember Donahue?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
No.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. There's a motion by Member Potts and a second by Member Donahue to approve with the amendments that Member Potts put in play. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
No. So we are at first reading again. Okay? That is item 12.2. We will move to item 12.3, which is the League of Cities' Resolutions, consideration of the ordinance resolution packet. Is there a presentation sharing?
No, this is just for the council to go ahead and discuss. You received the packet of the two resolutions in your packet, and so this would be an opportunity for you to give Vice Mayor Medina some guidance as to what position she would take.
Right, so maybe Vice Mayor Medina, if you could, for the benefit of the public, just very briefly outline what the two resolutions are before we take public comment?
Happy to. Resolution number one is a resolution of the League of Cities of California Cities calling upon the League to respond to increasing vulnerabilities to municipal...local municipal authority. Within the packet, it describes supporting, looking into a ballot measure to preserve some elements of local control, and talks about several bills that have recently been brought up in the California Legislature. Resolution two is a resolution of the League of California Cities declaring its commitment to support the repeal of preemption in California Food and Agricultural Code 11501.1 that prevents local governments from regulating pesticides. So those are the two resolutions that we are going to be deciding what I will be representing our position on.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll entertain public comment. If there's members of the public who wish to speak on this item, you have three minutes to do so. Are there any members present to speak?
Nope, not saying anyone.
Seeing none, we'll go back for discussion, and on...we'll start with resolution number one, and I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Medina for her comments first.
Right. I read every single letter of support from...about this bill, about this resolution, and have not been convinced that this is at all necessary, and I think it would actually be very counterproductive to the state of the housing crisis to pass a ballot initiative that restricts the state's ability to streamline planning and housing development. Ninety-seven percent of California cities don't hit their RENA requirements, and those that do mostly skate by on technicalities. The RENA requirements rely on self-reporting, and so often the requirements are quite low. California is in a massive housing crisis, and even within one of these letters, the main proponent uses a line from Alexis de Tocqueville's Democracy in America, a seminal text written in 1835 before California was a state. I find that argument that subsidiarity should be preemptive of the state law to be a little weak considering the fact that Alexis de Tocqueville called for the most centralized competent authority to handle matters. We have frankly not proven that cities in California are competent to address the housing crisis, and so I strongly urge you to empower me to vote no on this resolution.
Okay, Member Potts?
You know, I can't disagree with anything Member Medina just said, so I also oppose this.
Okay, Member Martinez?
I agree with Member Medina, although some of the bills that they called out, for instance, Senate Bill 649, the wireless telecommunications facilities, like I do agree that we need local control in some instances, but I think the housing crisis is not one of the areas where our cities in California have succeeded in governing themselves well. And when you look at who's leading on this resolution, oh, it's the city of Beverly Hills. They're not exactly doing the best in the state of California in terms of providing affordable housing in this crisis. So I am all for Member Medina saying no on resolution number one.
Member Donahue?
Vice Mayor Medina, have fun saying no.
Oh, I will. I'd like to point out that Beverly Hills actually met the arena requirements by building a whopping three houses.
Any more comments, Member Donahue?
Uh, no.
Okay, I would like to agree with Vice Mayor Medina and Member Martinez both. As Member Martinez noted, there are some bills that do inappropriately interfere and actually get in the way of cities doing work, but, you know, I'm not a fan of the League of Cities, that's not a secret, I've said that for a long time, I was the only mayor in writing who supported SBA 27 and was proud to do so, and I very personally believe that cities have gotten drunk on the idea of local control to a point where if they were actually competently, on the whole, if cities were actually competently doing what they are required to do under the government code and building housing, which is a local function, and not actually trying to block something as important as housing during a crisis like the one we have, then there might be an argument for local control. But most people in the Capitol view the League of Cities as a draconian organization that works basically to further very backwards policies here in California. I'm not a fan of the League of Cities, and I'm not a fan of this resolution, I think this is one of the most poorly-written resolutions, and Vice Mayor Medina has called that out in several ways, and I literally wrote a small treatise of things I could say about this, but rather than waste our time on that, I will simply add on with everybody else tonight. But I would like to ask us to take a look at the role the league has in the city of Emeryville and our relationship with the league, and what value it's bringing to us in light of the way it represents cities here in California at a future date, so I'll be asking for that at the end of this evening. So with that, there's no more comments, and I will entertain a motion on resolution one.
I move we oppose resolution one.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Pats to oppose resolution one at the League of Cities conference, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye. And resolution number two is related to the Food and Agriculture Code, related to pesticides and rodenticides, and the schedule that are not, that are not currently authorized, cities are not currently authorized to regulate on their own, they're superseded by state law, and Vice Mayor Medina, do you want to open comments on this one as well?
Um, no, I'd actually love to hear your opinions on this, I know you have a passion for particular pesticide knowledge on issues, I've noticed on sustainability, so I'd love to get your thoughts.
Okay, Member Martinez?
Uh, well, what I know of rodenticides is they're, gosh, they, they are, they harm the raptor population, which actually naturally get rid of rodents, and so there's, there's a whole spiraling issue, and I'm, as, as much as we can get away from chemical control of vector, I'm in favor of that, so I don't see any problem with this.
I just forgot for a second a raptor was a bird.
Oh, rap, yes, raptors are birds. Birds of prey.
Totally a Jurassic Park with us.
They've ruined our raptor population.
Member Donahue?
Uh, I am old enough to remember the crisis condition that happened in the early eighties, where residential communities were bombed by helicopters and trucks came around spitting out pesticides because of a real crisis to our agricultural crops at that time, which, you know, we're, it's a, it's an issue for our economy and for our livelihood as a state, and so I'm a little bit reluctant to repeal the state's control of this, because the agricultural industry, while we may not like a lot of the pesticides they use, sometimes there are ways of acting collectively that can solve a problem, and we could be in trouble from mosquito-borne diseases, for example, if we gave communities the ability to opt out, we could have local populations of mosquito-borne, disease-carrying insects that may not be good for the state as a whole, and so I don't think local control for this is a good idea. I think what we need to do is to advocate that our use of pesticides better reflect what would be a more healthful life going forward, but still leave it in state control.
Okay, Member Pats?
You know, I, I always say I come to the table with a blank mind, and tonight proves that. I was sort of thought local control on these issues are important, but I'm gonna, I remember the mallethyans rings from my childhood, and I do believe in herd immunity as they, as a analogy to what you're describing, so I'm of a mixed mind on this, I don't have a strong feeling. I'm dying to hear your passion on this, Mayor, because I, I, yeah, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay, so I oppose this resolution, but I have a recommendation as well. You know, growing, growing up in farm country, we, we use pesticides, herbicides, fungicides, and rodenticides for a lot of different reasons, and coagulant, rodenticides are very toxic to wildlife and also to different types of vegetation, and especially in the urban community that can pose a threat to human health. The issue here I see is with the way the resolution is crafted, the way the resolution is crafted, it calls for the repeal of 11501.1 of the Ag Code, which currently is the law that allows the state to supersede local governments, and this isn't just a local control issue, I think that one of the challenges that you'll see happen is that by repealing this statute, essentially, it will become incumbent on all 482 cities and 58 counties to enact ordinances specific to individual pesticides, herbicides, rodenticides, and the reality is that poorer communities that do not have staff to implement something like this will be stuck not being able to do this, and what we will actually have is we will have more toxic products being used in disadvantaged communities, I believe, disproportionately, communities that can't afford to actually implement or supervise a prohibition like this, and the appropriate step is actually, since there is data from the Department of Fish and Wildlife about the harms of these, these first-generation coagulants, anticoagulants, is to actually lobby the state legislature to move more of these toxic chemicals into prohibited status, so not to take away from the state its regulatory authority, but to actually get the state to regulate this area better, because if the state does it, and the state is enforcing a statewide ban, you have uniformity in the prohibition, which is a best practice, and you also have a state enforcement arm for this, whereas the state will not enforce individual local jurisdiction rules, even if we have a number of communities that take it upon themselves to imprint prohibit the use of this, there is very, very low likelihood that cities will actually be able to engage in an enforcement that's meaningful, and so what will happen is we'll actually have a gap in, that's created by, by the city enforcement, you'll, you'll really not have a meaningful prohibition unless the state is involved, and there's some sort of penalty tied to it. So I oppose the resolution because it calls for a remedy that's kind of the next step, it's not the first step. The first step is really to lobby for legislative change around which, which of these chemicals and which of these pesticides and rodenticides are on which schedule, and I think that that is what our recommendation should be to the league, is that we support in concept, but we oppose the resolution calling for a repeal of this section of the Food and Ag Code. So with that, I'm interested if people want to discuss further, is there anyone who wishes to discuss more?
I have a question, Member Medina, Vice Mayor Medina, do you serve on any policy committees at the league? Is this anything that you'd be able to get to before this comes to a floor vote?
Um, I would be happy to go speak at the resolutions committee. I mean, I plan on speaking to people about the first one quite a bit, so I don't mind working it in.
Yeah, okay, thank you, appreciate that.
You're our all-star representative at these conferences, I love it.
Just because like a thousand conservatives yelled at me doesn't make me an all-star.
In my book it doesn't.
Does anyone have any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Member Medina?
I'll move to oppose this with notes that we would support it in concept, especially a lobbying effort.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Pats to oppose resolution two, but to provide comment and feedback to the league regarding alternative options. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye, that concludes action items, we're on to item 13, which is department head reports, we'll start with Charlie Bryant.
Mayor Bouters and members of the city council, this is my report on the last planning commission meeting, which occurred about a week and a half ago on August 23rd. They began with a swearing-in of the two new commissioners that you appointed at your July 10th meeting, that was Jonathan Hidalgo and C. Tito Young, they were sworn into office by the city clerk. They then elected their officers for the coming year, they elected Linda Barrera as chair and Miguel Guerrero as vice chair. And then the only item on the agenda was a study session on the 40th and San Pablo bus hub draft concept options, so they heard a staff presentation and they had a robust discussion about that. This had been preceded the day before by a community meeting on August 22nd, and it will be followed by presentations on the same study at the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee on September 10th, and by the transportation, to the Transportation and Public Art Committees on September 20th, and then it will be coming to you on October 16th for a study session. That concludes my report, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bryant?
No.
Seeing none, Andrew, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, just a reminder that over the next month or two, you'll be seeing a lot more activity on the streets as the paving project mounts up. We've been doing a lot of the preliminary work, but there'll be a lot of work, as we mentioned before, almost a third of the city streets receiving some sort of surface treatment, and a number of weeks ago, we also were trying to work very closely with PG&E and trying to keep them as much as possible out of the intersection there at Powell and Christie for safety reasons, they did need to go in there and work, but, and we had issued to them a noise waiver that allowed them to work in the evening. Luckily, we're able to, as they uncovered, did their excavation and uncovered their connections, they found it to be a little bit different than what they expected, which is not uncommon, and we were able to work with them, and they came back and wanted to do some additional night work in the intersection, which we said no to, but they also ended up not doing any of the night work, which was approved, so that, that worked out okay, amazingly, and we may have to be coming back for some of our paving work as we go through that intersection, as was mentioned to you earlier, and was in the staff report when we approved the contract, because of the high volume of traffic and the fact that it backs up on the freeway through that area, we may have to grant a couple of days of work to our contractor, we're still working that out, trying to schedule that, and we'll, we'll do that as needed, if needed.
Are there any questions for Andrew? Seeing none, Chief Tahada?
Nothing to report.
Chief Yoder?
Nothing to report.
Are there any other department heads who I can't see on camera, who are on the other desk that have a report?
None.
No report.
Okay, item 14 is future agenda items, Member Pats, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Hmm, no.
Member Martinez?
I do not.
Member Donahue?
I do. I would like to use the podium to show some images of my proposed future agenda item. This is a, an image of a redwood tree in our co-op backyard. This redwood tree, I just measured today, it's 68 feet tall, its trunk is about three feet in diameter. It was planted in 1996 as a seedling. You can see it's quite large in 22 years. If I look around our city, we have a number of lots that are just sitting empty, pretty much devoid of vegetation. For example, Site B, that lot, I think, has been empty, except for the police temporary use of it, for 27 years. If we had had my proposed ordinance and had planted redwood trees in that lot, we would have a greenhouse capture equivalent of some huge volume, all free. These greenhouse gases are trapped with almost no maintenance by redwood trees. You can see around our city where redwood trees exist, that they grow like weeds here. They pull the fog out of the air, they make their way to groundwater, which is very accessible in Emeryville, and this is a way that we could store greenhouse gases, and then when the lots get developed, we can harvest the trees, and things can be made from this wood. For example, I'm doing a project at Fremont Kaiser, and there's three artists doing the project, I'm doing sculptures out of concrete, but the other two artists are cooperating to make benches out of redwood trees harvested from Kaiser's lot because they are finally remodeling, and I think we could do something like this around our city, and I could, if I had easy access to Google Satellite View, Charlie, I think you could set me up? I could show you the possibilities for our city.
Donahue, Member Donahue, I'm concerned that we're getting into a discussion and a presentation of an item that's not on the agenda, and the public is not here to discuss it, so if you have a request for us to agenda this, you can make that request and the council can give direction.
Okay, I would suggest that we agenda this item, not necessarily just for redwood trees, that was used for illustration, but we consider that we have, I can count at least nine places where we could be growing trees, and it would make our city look better, and we'd be capturing greenhouse gases, and I think we should study this idea.
So I'd like to, I'd like to support Member Donahue and propose that the Sustainability Committee receive Mr. Donahue's proposal and discuss it at one of our next meetings.
I was having the same thought, I thought that seemed like the appropriate place to start.
Yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Martinez?
Yep, that's good.
Okay, Member Donahue, are you satisfied with that response?
Yes.
Okay, so staff, we will, not obviously for the next meeting that we have next week, but at that meeting, Chair Medina and myself as the member to that committee, we will agenda for a future meeting, Member Donahue's proposed discussion item.
I forgot, I also have a suggested meeting item.
Okay.
Um, I would like to consider joining the City Possible Program, we need to sign an MOU, but it's totally free, and I can send this to everyone to review at a convenient meeting, and what it does, the City Possible Program is a network of cities that share tech solutions to livable city problems.
Get back? Member Martinez?
I support that.
Member Pats?
Sounds fine.
Yes.
I'm interested too.
We have a majority.
Okay, great.
Yes. I have two small items, one for later this fall, I would like to ask that the council have as a discussion or action item, a review of the benefits we receive as being a member of the League of Cities, and a discussion about the role and nature of the League of Cities in relation to the city of Emeryville. In addition to that, there was a request I received from the mayor of Berkeley, related to United Against Hate, so you may remember there are these signs and windows in our area that say Oakland is United Against Hate, Berkeley is United Against Hate, there is going to be, this year, it's going to be the Bay Area is United Against Hate, it is going to be a week-long event that will happen between November 11th and 18th, 2018, across the bay, and I can personally, any person can personally join on, but there is a request that the city of Emeryville, as a city, adopt a resolution that will be presented to all the cities who are joining the United Against Hate effort in the Bay Area, and if the council is agreeable, I would like to ask staff for one of the first October meetings before we get to November, to prepare that, that resolution for our agenda, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I will work with Sherry, I will work with Sherry and the city manager to get that in place. Are there any other items to be presented at this time? Seeing none, the time is 8:02, Madam Clerk, this meeting is adjourned.
Hey, record.
You all, good night.
Thank you.
You too.